It will call to order this December the 11th, 2019, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Present.
Mr. Stottlemyre.
Present.
Chair Howard.
Present. If you'd all stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Mark Hutton of the Westminster Presbyterian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess I'll be able to pray even with what's in front of me. Don't hold it against me, I'm from Denver. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, as we come before you this morning, we pause to give you your due, to give you thanks for the rising of the sun, for our feet hitting the floor, for the breath in our lungs. We give you thanks for the day before us, with all of its possibilities, and we give you thanks for calling us to serve you. And God, I give you thanks for the commissioners in front of me, and all the supporting cast around us, and I pray that you will grant them wisdom, that you will grant them insight, and that they will be able to lead this county to the best of their abilities, that they may do so following your guidance. God, we give you thanks for this season, for this time of good cheer. May we all go forth, sharing the joy of the season, remembering that you are the one who gives us this great hope and peace that we have. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, correspondent correspondent organizational business. It takes this public comment, no one signed up? Public comment? Okay. That would go to consent agenda items today on the consent agenda, the considered and approved are the December the 11th, commission meeting minutes, and there's no claim vouchers, tax change orders in the amount of minus $67.34. Would that look for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Mr. Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, takes us to item business, the first item of business to talk about today is the approval of amendments to the county comprehensive plan, and the amendments to the county zoning regulations to amend Article II definitions, Article III zoning districts and general regulations, Article IV A1 agricultural zoning district, spatial use permit requirements, and Article V A2 transitional agricultural zoning districts, and spatial use permit requirements for commercial wind and solar energy conversion systems based on the findings cited in the attached resolution. Larry.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you've indicated, this is an opportunity for us to establish the criteria for addressing renewable energy resources throughout the county. At your meeting in last June, you did give direction to staff to initiate amendments to the necessary regulations that the county has to recognize these facilities as a legitimate land use that may be permitted throughout the county, certain, subject to certain criteria. And as part of that, then, we did have an introductory meeting with the planning commission. We had two study sessions then later, addressing the pros and cons of the renewable energy facilities. We did hold two public hearings, and then the third, which was a continued hearing, did the planning commission did adopt a resolution approving the amendments to the comprehensive plan, and the amendments that you've just described to the planning and zoning regulations. I believe that most of you have followed us very carefully through this whole process. I don't have a lot to add, it's been a lengthy process, I think we've reviewed it pretty thoroughly, I had information from at least 14 different counties, we've had input from at least one solar development throughout the whole process. We really haven't had a lot of interest shown at this time on wind-related energy facilities. But we have included both wind and solar as uses that may be permitted in the county, subject to certain locational criteria and other development criteria that are established in the proposed zoning amendments that are before you this morning. I really have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions. I think we have had the support of the solar energy people, and like I said, I haven't really heard much from the wind energy people at this time.
I don't have a question, I do have a comment, I do appreciate, because if you read through this, this is a lot of work, and I know that you and the planning commission have put a lot of time into this, and we do appreciate that very much, and I think people need to realize that what we're doing today is not, what we're doing is setting a standard so that if a company, if a homeowner wants to do, consider doing something on their land, or if a company is, wants to consider coming into our county, what we're doing is establishing, these are the criteria you'd have to meet, and then you go to the special use permit application.
That is correct. There are no applications pending at this time. I think that there may be some interest, particularly in the solar energy facilities, but there are no pending applications at this time. What we're trying to do here was to get in front of this and not have a situation arising where somebody wants to put in an activity of that nature, and we have no provisions for it, which was and is the current status at this time. So what we're doing is recognizing through this process, the ability to establish those uses in Franklin County, subject to certain limits and certain criteria.
Well, I think the Farm Bureau, some of us went to the meeting they put on last night about renewable energy and its effects on other parts of the state that have experienced, and a representative from, speaks on behalf of wind energy, kind of a co-op or forget what it is, but a group of wind energy producers, and lots of good information, and it was a very useful event for us, or for me, I thought. One thing they talked about, the representative from the wind industry, is in the early days, there's kind of a, he said, it's parallel to like the history of petroleum in the state, you know, you have wildcatters, people that just go out, they're kind of reckless, they drill holes everywhere, they don't, they're not particularly reputable or anything like that. He said there was some of that in the wind industry, the renewables, and, you know, so if you're for or against renewable energy, wherever you fall on that, I think you can find some positive things about what we're doing today. As Ian says, it doesn't give the green light for any projects, it just sets the framework. But, you know, if you're against this, well, it does slightly narrow the type of people, a wildcatter-type person wouldn't, you know, would find some difficulty in some of these regulations, you know, somebody that was reckless. And if you're for it, renewable energies, this is just simply keeping out, you know, the kind of activity we wouldn't want anyways, we wouldn't want renewable energies, which you may see as a positive thing, to have a negative impact on your neighbors and get a bad reputation, so.
I think that was the major focus of this, was to address those areas that other communities have had, and their experiences with certain impacts, and that involves both solar and wind, primarily wind, because very few of the counties have really focused in on the solar energy facilities at this time. But based on what their experiences were, and how to mitigate some of those issues, is what we have tried to achieve in encompassing those within the framework of this amendment to our zoning regulations.
Throughout the process, we've got a lot of input from people in the solar industry, particularly, so I'm confident it's still a friendly place to do business for renewables, and they are too, they give a lot of input back, and we're, I think, happy to oblige most all their recommendations, so.
Through this process, also, I'm going to add that there was a company in our area that was meeting with some landowners and looking over the county, talked to, I think, most of us, and to Derek and different people, and I got an email from the representative from that company, and last night, and she's not able to be here, but she did tell me, and I think she's told all of us, that they've dealt with numerous of these resolutions, being they're involved in the solar and the wind energy, and she said that they fully support this one, and it's one of the better ones that they've seen, she said it's very fair to the county, to the company, and to the landowners, and they fully support it, so it's a very good resolution, and just putting that out there in their opinion, so.
The bottom line is that Franklin County is not the best place in the state of Kansas for wind, it's also not the best place in the state of Kansas for sun, but we are, we do have close proximity to major metropolitan areas, which kind of makes it, and we're kind of at the tail end, so, you know, as far as huge wind farms, that's probably not in the future, they're kind of maximized where they want to be at this point, so, but we, at least we have regulations.
And I think that's what's helped with the drafting of this, I mean, we're not pioneers here when it comes to renewable energy, we were able to look at 14 separate counties and understand what worked for them, what didn't work for them, parts of their regulations that were ideal, parts that weren't, and we were able to pull the best from all of them and create what I think is a very comprehensive, very fair document, so, very comfortable with where this is.
I think most of the people there last night were people that were concerned about how, if a wind generator did come into their area, how it impacted the neighbors, basically, and their rights as a neighbor, because of a lot of adversity, if a big wind turbine comes to the property next to you, and potential decrease in your value, because nobody wants to build a house, or buy land next to a wind turbine necessarily, in a highly populated area, so, I think a lot of them were concerned about, necessarily the property rights of the one that wants to put in the project, it's kind of property rights of the people that are around the area. So it's good to have a starting point where we have regulations to kind of show that we do have a mechanism to kind of control that. So I appreciate everything the planning commission has done, and you've done over the last six months.
To do this.
I got some, well, I appreciate Larry, all the work he's done on this, myself, I didn't ask a lot of questions last night or make much statement, but I've been to so many of these, trying to educate myself, that I've heard almost all of the statements, but serving on the planning board two different times, I understand the other side of it, what the planning boards had to do, and all the work and time that they give theirself and their time to this, and I know I attended the deal last night, and I went to all the planning board sessions that the planning board had, I attended the one, KEC educational classes on wind generation and solar, also went down to Oklahoma, spent a couple days with RCND, organization, and they had a project and training down there on wind, they didn't do the solar, but they did, because Oklahoma's big, and they had a power company down there to give presentation, plus I met with a couple of county commissioners from Coffee County that, probably the most recent and closest, to see what kind of things they ran into, and happened, and discussed with them, and then, of course, I sat down with Larry several times, and his opinion on the issue, and so I feel that we're just, as being on the planning board, I know a lot of things that we did was looking towards the future, not something that's happened right now, and so I feel like that's what Larry has done, he's been, got out there and put this together before we come to that point, maybe five, 10 years before we ever run into this, but whoever comes next will be thankful that he's already laid it out, and the commissioners laid something out, a blueprint for them to be able to use, and not go back and reinvent the wheel, so.
Don, Larry and I have already agreed, he's going to be here in 10 years, so.
Well, I'll tell you the story.
Would you sign this?
I hired Larry, 15 years ago I was here, and he said he'd give us two good years, 15 years ago, and I'm always questioning him, what have you been doing these other years?
Which two were the good ones?
Yeah.
Is your planning commission, they could be getting busy, they could be getting busy.
Yes, they've been very, very busy, this was just one of the items that they've had on their agenda during that six months, so they've been, kept pretty busy for the last part of this year.
You know, there are half the counties in the state of Kansas that do not have any zoning regulations, so, kudos to us that we can, we have them in place so that we have a handle on things that are going on in our county.
Substantially less than half have no zoning whatsoever, and there's only 20 counties in the state of Kansas that have billing codes, so that gives you a bit of an idea of where Franklin County stands with the remainder of the state. There are three actions that we would ask for you to take this morning. The first of those would be to approve a resolution adopting the amendments to the comprehensive plan, as recommended by the planning commission. The second matter would be an adopted resolution approving the amendments to the zoning regulations, and the third would be adopted resolution that accepts the resolution and recognizes that resolution for purposes of publication, so that you don't have to put three pages of documents that we would normally print as part of the resolution of approval, but as provided in state law, that we can reference that, and since we have a resolution that has approved it, that will be on file with the county clerk, anyone that would be interested in it can either come to that office or our office and get a copy of the amendments that are included. But there would be three resolutions, and the first of those is like the general plan, adoption of the amendments to the zoning, and then adopting a third for the purpose of publication.
Okay, is there any more questions that anyone has on this? We will go ahead and get started, if you're ready. The first, I'd look for a motion to approve the amendments to the county comprehensive plan as recommended by the planning commission.
It's approved.
Have a motion, sir, second.
Okay. Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay. For the second motion, I'd look for a motion to approve the amendments to the county zoning regulations to amend Article II definitions, Article III zoning districts and general regulations, Article IV A1 agricultural zoning district, and spatial use permit requirements, and Article V A2 transitional agricultural zoning district. For a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, and the third motion, I would look for a motion to approve a resolution, to approve the publication notice, adopting a resolution for the approval of the amendments to the county zoning regulations by reference provided by KSA 12-3303.
So moved.
Motion and second.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, takes us to item two, Larry's going to be staying with us, approval of rezoning application 1910-1721, to rezone approximately 38.90 acres from an A1 agricultural zoning district to an A2 transitional agricultural zoning district.
As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is a request to rezone approximately 38.9 acres from the current zoning of A1 agriculture to A2, the transitional agricultural zone. The reason for that is that the parcel no longer meets the requirements, the minimum requirements for the A1 zoning district in terms of acreage, nor is it an adequate division of this particular section of land, so since it doesn't qualify, the next logical zoning district would be the A2 zoning district. The planning commission considered this at their last meeting, and have forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners to adopt a resolution approving the rezoning. We did give notice to five property owners, no one appeared opposed or in favor of the rezoning, and the planning commission does recommend that you approve the rezoning requirement.
Questions on this, something we do on a pretty regular basis, out of the ordinary here. No questions? Okay, I would look to for a motion to approve rezoning application 1910-1721, to rezone approximately 38.90 acres from an A1 agricultural zoning district to an A2 transitional agricultural zoning district.
It's approved.
Second. Motion and second.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Mr. Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, item number three, consider awarding the financing of the three 2019 120-14 AWD motor graders to Kansas State Bank in the amount of $503,836.47. David.
Commissioners, back in November, you approved soliciting bids for the financing for the three motor graders that we recently took possession of. We received three bids for that, which is, the last time around, we received six, so little disappointed we didn't have more participation. However, the interest rate that was provided to us by Kansas State Bank was actually lower than the last go-around, so I'm pleased with that. So of the three bids, Kansas State Bank was the lowest and best bid, so for the $503,836.47 spread over four payments beginning in March of 2021, is kind of how we've got this set up, so I would look for approval to move forward with closing on that.
Since my time here, I know we've done this several times with Kansas State Bank, and this has always been good, and I'm glad they're willing to bid on this again. Any questions on this?
What do we have, the first payment, year and a half out?
It is specifically to meet our, I have a schedule of payments for the things that we lease, and it works, quite frankly, it works best for us to push it out another year, so that we are able to operate within our standard budget. It's not until we get to 23 and 24 that we have to make some adjustments in our budget, so this is strictly for our benefit.
Not getting behind on our equipment replacement, we, and I know we have pretty good equipment, so I'm not worried about something going bad and then getting farther out.
This is our, strictly to our benefit, the, if you recall, we, we were on five-year terms with our motor graders.
Okay.
The condition of those motor graders after five years is, they're still in good shape, and so with this last round, these three, and the one earlier this year, we elected to go to a seven-year turnaround time, which essentially gives us two years of no payments through this, so it actually, we think it's going to help us. The equipment through that additional two years, or 1,500 hours, is still, still high quality.
Life of the equipment will catch us up, so that makes sense.
Yes, sir, so we feel like this is the best thing for our purposes, and fortunately, the banks are willing to work with us on this, and I think it'll be just fine.
This is something that David has worked very closely with Janet and I on, and one of the things that we've discovered in the last year is that our equipment replacement schedule, and Jim always did a great job with that, but it needed some tweaking in order to make it as sustainable as we can, and this is one of those moves in order to do that, and so, but yeah, it does not compromise us at all into the future.
Do you want to have anything else? Now, I would look for a motion to approve awarding the financing of the three 2019 120-14 AWD motor graders to Kansas State Bank in the amount of $503,836.47.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, sir, second.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, takes us to item number four. Item number four is an item that was on the study session last Monday, we discussed that quite a while on Monday, now it's in front of us today, it's consider the purchase of extrication tools for Franklin County EMS.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
As you stated, we talked about this in detail on Monday, just to quick highlight, the current extrication tools that we have are 14 years old, I believe, they have hit the end of their life, one segment of our pump is inoperable and unable to be repaired. These tools are considerably lighter, more mobile, a lot better set than we've had, and probably one of the best sets we're going to have in the county, so I strongly recommend that we move forward with the purchase and get a set of tools out there, due to the fact that the EMS extrication tools are the number one used tools in the county, so I'm here for any questions you might have come up with.
Not a question, one thing I'll add to the public that might not have been here Monday or might have missed Monday, Nick was able to find these, this equipment, that's demo equipment, and full warranty on it, companies close by that can work on it if we need it, and was able to save a substantial amount of money by purchasing this demo equipment from this company, so give kudos to Nick going out there and locating good equipment and a substantial discount for us, so.
Ideally, volunteer fire departments will do the extrication, but the fact that volunteers are hard to find and they're not always available, the reason ambulance department carries these.
Jaws of life, basically, is what most people would know as, is, because there's times when there's somebody trapped, they need help, and we're there well before a fire department, and you can give better patient care, if you can get them out, work on them, and it's better for the, better outcome for the citizens, so.
And I will tell you, we've looked across the county at trying to figure out ways to expedite responders being there, what it would look like for us to have volunteers utilize those tools, and for the most part, especially the set of tools that we've had, we may have volunteer firemen utilize those tools, but just being able to get the tools there so they're available was the big key. And I will also add that we have budgeted for this item, for the. And I will also add that we have budgeted for this item for the last four years. They were on a ten-year replacement schedule, and we have been able to get four more years out of those tools than anticipated with the replacements. So the money will come from the equipment reserve, and it has been set in there for a while now.
I got the paper here with twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars written. It's, that's the cost. I think that's what's for Monday.
Twenty-nine thousand nine twenty.
That was for Monday's. Any more questions on this? Like I said, we talked about this Monday, it was all in favor of this, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase of extrication tools for Franklin County EMS in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Motion approved.
Second? Motion to second?
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, this, item five, I believe we also have had this on the study session and discussed this. Consider for approval proposed changes to the current Franklin County personal, personnel rules and pay plan. Joanne?
Good morning, Commissioners. In front of you today is to formally add the wellness policy that you had previously approved into the manual. Five point one six will add the wellness leave into the leave section of the policy. It stipulates that employees can earn up to one hour, in one-hour increments wellness leave, that they would have to use this leave, a maximum of eight hours of this leave annually. The second addition is the formal adoption of putting the wellness policy into section six point eight of the manual.
So this was also on a study session when we discussed this, and... Questions on this? I would look for a motion to approve proposed changes to the current Franklin County personnel rules and pay plan.
Motion approved.
Are motions are second?
Second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, item number six. Joanne's going to stay up here with us. This has also been on the study session that we have talked about in the past. Consider for approval proposed changes to the current Franklin County pay ranges for classified positions.
The first addition is to add the communications director, I should say, the director of communications to the pay plan at a grade thirty, and to move the correctional officer and the court security officer from the grade eleven to grade fifteen. In addition, we would like to get some consistency on our pay plan for naming conventions, so that would change the facility operations manager to the director of facility operations and the health director to the director of health. And the final one is, in reviewing our job, job descriptions, we have noticed that one of them in the EMS department, the community education director, has significantly changed since that position was added to the pay plan. This position now not, doesn't only schedule the classes, makes recommendations to, for what changes should be made to the educational programs, makes recommendations and approves and, and can eliminate instructors to that position. So there are significant changes that will move it from that grade seventeen to a grade twenty.
Before we move forward on this, I do want to give just a, another recap of how we arrived here. So our corrections officers and our court security officers, what we have learned is that they have been woefully underpaid when compared to adjacent counties. And when I talk about adjacent counties, I, I'm not talking just about Douglas, Sandor Johnson, I'm talking about Anderson, Osage, Miami. Despite having a much higher daily population in our jail, our corrections officers made two dollars or so less than each of those counties, and that's, as we talked about before, that's not acceptable. I mean, we know they've got a more demanding job, we've got a higher population in this county, we've got a higher tax base in this county. So by moving them from an eleven to a fifteen, that puts us above Osage, it puts us above Anderson, it puts us in line with Miami, still behind Douglas, still behind Johnson, but it, it really, what it does, it puts those positions in line with where most of our positions are. If you go through our pay plan, we normally do pay more than Anderson, we normally pay more than Osage. Miami, it's kind of a coin flip. Don't pay as much as Douglas, don't pay as much as Johnson. And so this really gets the corrections officers where they've always needed to be. The sheriff's other staff, thinking about his deputies, they are paid competitively. If you look at where they're at compared to their peers in Anderson, Osage, they, they make more. And so it's really just this single group of his employees that we needed to look at and make a change to. And so now, obviously, the twenty twenty budget has been set long ago, so how are we going to do this without raising the budget? You'll recall that we removed one of the sheriff's positions here a couple years ago, a sergeant position, and when we did that, we realized a sixty-five thousand dollar savings. What you told the sheriff at that time was, we will keep that money earmarked for your use in future years, and we've done that. We've used it in the jail on detox cells, on lighting, and what we're going to do in twenty is we're, and moving forward, frankly, is we're going to put that money towards the salaries of the court security officers and the correctional officers. That will eat the lion's share of that increase. And the other remaining increase, we can more than cover with the way we budget our benefits. Every year for our health insurance, we budget a ten percent increase in our benefits, and we do that because historically, I mean, we've seen that. This past year, we were fortunate in that the increase was only around five percent. So we had five percent or so budgeted that we're not going to have to use. So I say all that to say, we're not going to have to do a thing with the budget in order to cover this. It, it shouldn't be a problem at all. And so no negative budget impacts. It will get our employees up to a more competitive level of pay. I don't really see a downside to doing this, so.
Comparing ourselves to other counties and what they pay is a good way to, you know, determine what's fair. I think the important thing too to note is, we're having a hard time attracting and retaining quality help, and that's...
You put them a couple dollars low, you make it almost impossible for the sheriff to stay at full staff.
Not as if we're paying them a little low and, and, but still getting a rich pool of applicants. We're doing it for an effect, so.
And, you know, the sheriff, to his credit, has, he's tried to do things to make that position more appealing at that price point. He's done a good job of creating a pipeline from corrections officers to deputies, but at some point, when you can go to Anderson County and make two dollars more and deal with less than half the number of inmates, I mean, that, you know, what, twenty-minute drive doesn't, you know, becomes pretty appealing at that point, so.
This will become effective with the next pay.
The next pay period, so December twenty-one.
Anything else on this? I would look for a motion to approve proposed changes to the current Franklin County pay ranges for classified positions.
Approved.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Thank you, Joanne. Okay, it takes us to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about the process of arriving at these new regulations for renewable energy. I think it's been a fantastic example of how local government should work. Nobody's worked harder on this than Larry and Dee Farrell, his assistant. They've worked incredibly hard at the staff level. The planning commission had numerous hearings, got great feedback from the public, provided meaningful feedback to Larry, and then the five of you on top of that have been engaged throughout this process. You've attended numerous hearings on this, you've educated yourself on this. I don't know what more your constituents could ask for with regard to how this specific issue was handled. I think it's something that you should be proud of all around. Larry and Dee should certainly be proud of the effort that they've given. Larry Walrod is sharper than a tack. He does a fantastic job, and certainly hope I can continue working with Larry for a long time. So that's all I have today.
You want to say anything? All right. Casey? Nick, anything else?
Wanted to take a minute and catch you up on the accreditation process for dispatch. I know I've talked to you about that for the last few months. We did have our, our site visit, we had our, our inspection on everything, and I will tell you, we got nineteen out of twenty points. So for starting this in February and our first attempt at it, we got everything except for the, the processes in which we handle calls. And what we've identified with that, that through the pro-QA process through Paramount, you have to read verbatim what the card says. So what is the address of your emergency? If you change that, it's a negative. What, the biggest problem we had is the CAD system we currently use is not a certified vendor for the Paramount. And with that, we had issues with it launching. So for us to get nineteen points out of something that wasn't certified to work with, I, I'm very pleased with the employees down there. The girls have done a tremendously good job. The great part about it is, I think we're on track now. They want us to do three more months of call reviews. With that, I think in April, we will successfully become accredited. And like I said, it was just minor things of that card not popping up, them trying to recite it from their head, and missing little keywords. No, no bag came from it. It actually has been a good process to, to evaluate where we're at and, and where we're going to go. And one of the biggest things that we've identified is the CAD system is going to need to be updated in the future. The good part about that is, since we joined the state of Kansas phone system last year, the, they're switching to a new mapping program called Rapid Deploy. Rapid Deploy is a CAD vendor out of South Africa that's kind of taking United States by storm. They have state-of-the-art mapping solutions and CAD solutions. They are gold certified work, to work with the Paramount. So we could obtain this for the same price we're paying for the mapping solution. The other thing about that, Sarah, myself, and one of my dispatchers are on the design team for the state on the CAD, so we're kind of getting to put our input in on what that could look like, and I fully expect that if we choose to use that, we will be able to be one of the first to go on that in the first part of next year. I do know we will be on the mapping by about February of next year. So there is a solution to fix it, and since we're already on the state system, I don't see a big increase in cost for that. So the good things are coming with it, but that's kind of where we're at on the accreditation process. As far as that, we are, I did meet with the sheriff, the police chief of Wellsville in Ottawa, to discuss EPD, which is emergency peace, police dispatch, which falls in line with emergency medical dispatch, which kind of standardized some questions, gives some response guidelines. They also have a third discipline called EFD, which is emergency fire dispatch, which gives us the same kind of line of questioning as the EMD. So as we're moving forward, it is my intent, if it's chosen by the advisory board and they're interested, to continue to move forward with more standardizing of how we ask questions and what we do for responses. So that's where we're at on kind of the, the gamut of dispatch. I will tell you again, we've been full staff, we've got a, a good bunch of girls working down there. EMS side, I fully intend to give you guys a full report on that, but we do have revenues coming in well with transitions from, this year, we've, we've had some moving parts, education stuff we've had to work through. So I think we've finally finalized a lot of that and can get you guys some accurate numbers of what it looks like, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Hope you never have to use those extrication tools, so. Sheriff?
Good. First of all, I want to say thank you for approving that pay plan and changing those pay grades, and appreciate the encouraging words that were said about our staff, and I know that they appreciate what you guys have done for them as well. I believe, as you know, I serve on the Attorney General's Human Trafficking Advisory Board and a couple subcommittees, ad hoc committees for that. So just to bring some, a couple things to your attention, on our legislative committee, we came up with a, a couple different proposals that will be moving forward. Part of what we did at that meeting, as most of you guys are probably aware, lots of times proposals will come out, and really what we're trying to do is defend ourselves from some of the things that may come out of Topeka, because not everything has some, always has the consequences and the intended results that they have there, so sometimes it's just a protection status. But we do have a couple things that, that we're going to be trying to push forward and that we would, if you guys could, would so be inclined to also encourage legislature to support those things. And the one is simply just a change on the, on what those statutes are. Currently, we have, we have statutes for selling sexual relations and buying sexual relations. We're changing that, we want to, we're proposing a change in the terminology to make that, to go from sexual relations to sex act, because it just kind of, it's more accurate. They're not selling a relationship with someone when they're promoting prostitution, they're pushing someone into human trafficking. So it's just a, it's a minor change that is there. The other big push that we are supporting is also some regulation of the massage industry. And the legislation that we've been working with on that, was actually working with that, with the massage industry themselves, who is also asking for some regulation there, because their profession, which is legitimate, lots of times gets hijacked a little bit through human trafficking and things like that. So those are the two big things that we were, that we were really pushing and that. So when those things come up, like I say, if you guys are so inclined, we'd appreciate your support on those as well. Couple months ago, I also talked to you that, about the fact that the National Sheriff's Association and National Association of Counties was proposing some legislation that in, on the medical side for justice-involved individuals that are on federal benefits and insurance, that when they are pre-trial, currently they lose all their benefits when they go to jail, and our proposal, a proposal from the NSA and the National Association of Counties is that, that that would change to where they maintain their benefits, at least pre-conviction. Since they've not been convicted of a crime, we believe that they should still have those benefits. That benefits us as a county, because currently, the way it is set up, we fund all of those medical procedures and everything. So it's been brought to my attention that the US Senate should be moving on this here in the next few days. And so again, I provided that information to you before. If you want, if you need it again, I've got it, and I would be happy to share that with you as well. But again, if you're inclined to reach out to, to our delegation in DC on behalf of the county for, for that legislation, I think this could potentially save our county quite a bit of money through our jail medical stuff, so. And the last thing that I have, I spoke to you guys, a couple of you, I believe it was on Monday, about some proposed legislation that, what we have read coming out of, potentially will be introduced in Topeka on this, this time concerning some red flag laws, some concerns I had about that with what I believe violate the Second, Fourth, and Fifth Amendments of the Constitution, which as a constitutional office holder, it would make it difficult... which as a constitutional office holder, it would make it difficult for any of us to faithfully discharge the duties in accordance with the Constitution based on what was there. Just so that you are aware, I did reach out to a couple legislators, shared those, my concerns. Without getting too much in depth, they also have some of those concerns there. And so, we are, we'll be watching that as it goes, as it goes through. But I have reached out to them and they understand that, what those concerns are. And what we're trying to do is just, as I explained to them, is just avoid the conflict that is going on in other states, particularly Colorado right now. There's a big battle between the counties and sheriffs and then the governor and the attorney general in that state for basically what is similar to what we have seen as a possible proposal here. So, we're just trying to head that off before any of those things happen, so.
I, if you, the way you explained it to me, I can't imagine how that would not throw up red flags to anybody reading that. I mean, I know it's the red flags for the individuals that may be dangerous out there, but, well, that thing throws up a bunch of red flags for the...
And my concern on it is that if we identify a person that is a potential threat because of mental illness or something like that, we need to be focused on, let's deal with the person and what the problem is instead of going about it with, with no due process and just taking property from people. So, I share, I shared those, our concerns. And so, I believe we have some support on that side. So, other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
I think so.
Sheriff, Association of Counties Legislative, Jenna, has the medical provision to keep those benefits until after sentencing.
Good.
Thank you. Anything, Department of Corrections? Let's see. Dave?
Commissioners, since last Wednesday, we have essentially finished the work at Nevada and Haskell Terrace, or Nevada and Haskell, that intersection. And then Oregon north of Rock Creek, those projects are basically done. The project on Haskell between Ohio and Oregon, there was quite a washout on the north side of the road and there's a spot on the low-water crossing right there. We've got a little bit more ditch work to do and we've got to fix that hole in the, in the low-water crossing. That should be done today, hopefully. The, the work on Eisenhower South of Haskell, we've got another day or two worth of work there. We had, there was a set of double tubes that we were going to just kinda clean out around them and then add an overflow tube. We discovered upon a little closer inspection that one of the tubes was rusted out and needed to be replaced. So, instead of adding the overflow tube, we have upsized the pipes to be able to handle the storm water, the water that'll be flowing through there. They just got some pictures there in the process of setting those pipes and backfilling and trying to get that road reopened as soon as possible. We've got a little more grading work to do and some armoring with riprap, some of those drainage areas. And then we've got a little fence to build there. So, we're, we're getting close on that project. On Kentucky, north of Thomas, we had another large washout and, and entrance tube that was completely plugged with rock and other materials. So, we've taken care of the ditch and we replaced the entrance. So, that one's in good shape. Filled a washout on Marshall, west of Nevada Terrace, that was kinda eaten away at the edge of the asphalt road. So, we added material there to, to fix that issue. And there was another one at 1517 Florida Road that we took care of as well. Today, this morning, we closed Clark Road just east of Highway 59. There's a short stretch of road there that was washed out. And there's an entrance that needs to be replaced. So, we've had barricades on those spots for quite a long time, trying to get to them. Today, we're, we're there. So, we'll have that barring any unforeseen things coming up. We should be able to take care of this and get the road reopened by the end of the day. And the next large project that, semi, excuse me, semi-large project that we're gonna be working on is in the 1100 block of Indiana Road. There's a set of crossroad tubes that need to be replaced. So, we'll be working on that as soon as we wrap up some of these other things. So, we remain busy and on the go. All I have.
Yep. This is your chance. Hey. Paul, you got anything you wanna add today? Takes us, Commissioner comments and board reports? Dot?
Before I forget about it, Solid Waste Authority meeting will be here in the Commissioner's Room. If they move around to six counties, then it's our turn tomorrow. So, there will be a meeting here tomorrow morning at 9:00 of the Six Counties Solid Waste Authority. If anybody wants to attend, more than welcome. I do belong on the Food Policy Council here for the county. And we did sign a letter of agreement with the school systems here in Ottawa and for food pantry, and they've agreed to do storage and, and delivery to stuff out of the school. The lady told us, is the first one in the state of Kansas, that there's been a working agreement. And actually, some of the students have joined in and are being involved in this and being in the deliveries. We don't allow them to deliver without an adult being with them, going out to the different towns. But they are, the high school kids are getting involved. Sherry Cohen, of course, teaches the culinary out there and everything. She kinda spearheaded that, she's on Food Policy Council. So, it's, and we are, did apply, it looks like we'll get a, the Food Policy Council for this program, a $15,000 grant from the Pathways. It's not official, but, but we have applied. Being the Health Department controls the Food Policy Council, we'll hopefully get favorable results there. I did go down to Rantle City Meeting the other night. Two of the main things they talked about is they're still trying to get, several of the towns that are getting together to do a joint codes, are trying to realign a lot of their ordinances so they look more... So, when they go to code court, everybody ain't got six different ordinances for the same offense. And they're trying to realign some of their ordinance between the little towns and smaller towns and to make their ordinance look more similar or like when they go to code court that they, they won't have a big variance of how they take care of them. And the other thing is they, they're still working with the pathways down there too, to grant to build new bathrooms at the ballpark. And they were informed that a couple of the other towns went to, and the city of Ottawa also, did no smoking ordinance in their park and was able to get some funds for that too. So, they were informed and they're gonna check into, hopefully get, help them with their part of the cost. The, I went down to Plain City Meeting the other night. Main thing they talked about was the big water break they had here a few months ago during the floods. And people asked why they didn't see it, cause they lost much water. Well, the water was up under the bridge for almost six months down there and the break was in the river, so, you know. But they have got that all fixed and maintained and back in working order. They're just trying to figure out the cost of all the big water loss for those months. The main thing they talked about is their, their change of mayors after years. Bill Chester, a lot of things you have to change when they change all the signatures and agreements and bank accounts. So, they spent most of their time discussing that and talking about that. I'll go, didn't have a Wellsville Chamber meeting this month. They canceled it for the month of December and I'll go to Wellsville tonight. That's all I got.
Nothing else as far as meetings? Do we wanna talk about our 23rd study session?
Yeah.
Do you do that at the end? All right.
I did go to the City of Ottawa Commission Meeting last Wednesday. Theirs was about as short as ours was. They did an amendment to their budget. I think at the end of the year, you have those things you have to figure out. On Friday, I went to a, a Chamber coffee at the Banzus Dermatology, which is located just off of Kanza Park here, which is really nice to have that dermatologist in the, in the, in town. Monday, I had to go to the study session for the city and they're still working on an agreement with a new, kind of a new Main Street Association group. That's pretty much, that was the main thing. And then we went to the Farm Bureau meeting last evening. I did have a nice talk with Paul Bean last week. Exciting, exciting times. And, and he's like, anybody that wants to hear about it, to talk about it, let me know. So, let him know.
I had a meeting with ECAN last night, board meeting before the Farm Bureau meeting. And a lot of their funding comes from grants. And a lot of the grants are predicated with matching funds. And their Head Start and pre, pre-Head Start have a couple of pretty good-sized grants that they receive and to offset the matching funds, they use various means of fundraising and that sort of thing. And they can count volunteer hours and that sort of thing. And then they ask for waivers for, you know, if they can't quite match, get the matching funds they need. So, we approved asking for waivers to get the grants for Head Start and pre-Head Start. So, it was a, it was a board meeting, but it was a conference call, board meeting. Then went to Farm Bureau and, and then I was reminiscing today, cause Roger Maxwell here with Kansas State Bank and appreciate his, you know, his, you know, funding our road graders. Paul Volcker died this, this week. And Paul Volcker was the head of the Federal Reserve there back in the early 80s. And his method of treating runaway inflation, which we had then, was to raise the Federal Reserve rates. And I remember paying 14% at that time. And a lot of people with gray hair remember those times when the interest rates were sky-high. But if you did have money, you can, you could get over 10% for a CD. So, anyway, that was the offset. And it's kinda mind-blowing, mind-blowing to me that, you know, we're just a little over 2% interest rate on this half-million-dollar, you know, loan that we approved for our equipment. It's great that we do have low interest rates to kinda can save, save us a little bit of money, even though the equipment prices have gone through the roof too, so. Anyway, I'll just reminisce about that and appreciate Roger Maxwell and Kansas State Bank for bidding on our equipment.
Okay, I attended Richmond City Council meeting last night. It was a fairly long meeting, but a lot of different discussions. They talked about time sheets for their employees, talked about how much the water sales each month was compared to what it costs for them to get the water ready to, for people to use. They had some old table and chairs, they talked about what to do with them. They're getting rid of them and putting some new ones in there. City Office talked about possibility of changing pay periods. Talked about possibly going salary to their employee instead of hourly pay. And nothing was decided on that. Talked about their health insurance for their employee, decided to stay with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And they're having problems with their furnace at the water plant. They had a representative there giving them some prices and ideas about replacing the furnace. And they renewed the cereal malt beverage license for Highway 59 service station. That was pretty much most of that. Okay, I just lost my computer, so hopefully I can find it on the paper here. It takes us to information and announcements. We have a meeting scheduled for December the 18th. We wanna discuss possibly, we have a study session scheduled for December the 23rd, but there will be no commission meeting that week, no commission meeting the next week, cause New Year's. I know Mr. Waymire will be gone that, that whole week. Do we wanna stay with that study session on that week, or?
That's your call. I'll be here and I could have you something, but there's certainly nothing that warrants studying. And anything that we would, as you said, it would be three weeks before it was back in front of you at a board meeting, so.
So, we could have another scheduled study session before we would have a commission meeting?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, no, that's your call, Rick. But no, we're not gonna delay any pressing business if we cancel that study session.
It's, whatever, I don't, doesn't matter to me particularly. I will be here that week, but if any other commissioners may be leaving in Christmas week and holiday. Okay. I, I personally don't see a reason to have just the study session. If we can have one before the next meeting to discuss it, then it would come in front of us.
Yeah. Oh, that's great.
We will have a commission meeting though, next Wednesday.
Okay.
Anything else? Dot would look for a motion to adjourn.
Deemed?
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned?